...... There's great concern over the budgets for our schools. If you meet here tonight, it shows how secure that is again in this community's approach. Just for the record, I want to involve them to see how ...... Area 58 is here and this is called the Owl. It has very good sensors and camera tracking. If you speak, it will pan towards you. If you snivel, it will pan towards you. If you cough, it will pan towards you. But on to the school committee correspondents. I've been working very closely with town leadership since late January when the Silver Lake preliminary budget came out and the Denny preliminary budget came out for how we were going to handle the increases we were seeing to the cost of education for our small town. As many of you know, our annual town budget is roughly $13 million. And the increases we were seeing for educational loan were north of $700,000 of increases. In working with the town, they said that they could afford approximately $400,000 in increases, meaning that we would have to find a way between Silver Lake's budget and Denny's budget to cut over $300,000 away. Silver Lake Regional Schools on March 14th did cut from the Denny's or from Plington's perspective, $155,000. So, we were tasked this evening with coming up with close to $170,000 in additional cuts from the proposed budget for the Denny Elementary School, which unfortunately was going to include reduction in force to staff members here at the school. Conversations continued all the way up until 4 o'clock this afternoon where I was approached by the town manager with an offer for one-time funds of $62,000. It's ARPA revenue replacement funds. It will fill the hole in the dyke for a year, but it will allow us this evening not to have to make any reduction in force and keep our entire staff whole and complete. And I shared that sentiment and I vacillated between tears and almost pure panic of nausea because this also does mean that my budget next year for FY '26, because I need to be cognizant of what my budget this year does to my budget next year, with just my obligations to salaries, with this one-time fund then coming off the table and us losing some of our circuit breaker reimbursement to Silver Lake since we've shifted some of our special ed costs to Silver Lake, I may be beginning my Denny budget next year in the hole by eight to 10%. Coming again to the town with a $400,000 ask for just the Denny Elementary School. Well, the town already gave us all the money they have this year. They worked, they scraped, they went right up to the lead. You may have heard of Proposition 2.5? There is no more space for Proposition 2.5 in Plington. Last year, the town, the town meeting voters allowed the schools to increase the cost of education by over $500,000. Again, this year, we're going up by over $450,000. In just two years, that's nearly a million dollars of increases just for our schools here in Plington. No one can say that we don't care about our schools and we don't invest in our schools. But I think that we are probably going to have to start a campaign for Proposition 2.5 override. And I'm looking at all of you who are residents of town with me. I'm going to be leaning on all of you who took time out of your day tonight to be here to help me carry that across the finish line next year so we can keep this staff together for the students of the Denny. So I will now open up the floor to any public participation this evening because of the amount of people. I will be holding everyone to a strict three-minute limit. Would anybody like to speak to the committee this evening? Just please identify yourselves.
I'm Elizabeth Wippen. I'm a fifth grade teacher and along with Lorne Elsaris, they're co-presidents of the Asian Teachers Association and speaking on behalf of everyone who works in Denny. We love the children of Denny. Our purpose has always been to provide quality education for our kids, our kids, our kids. We're beyond grateful to the committee and town for the value of the services provided to our students. We're fighting every lesson of the financial impact of the crisis in this district. Time again, this town is rallying among its teachers and we just feel a strong reflection to be a small part of this amazing town and prepare your health. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the audience like to make comment? On our agenda this evening, we have a few items that we need to get through, but we will move the budget discussion up in the agenda so you don't have to stay here for your entire evening. There will be some cuts to supply lines. There will be potentially a cut to a position that we have not filled all year long, but we've been looking for that individual to come to us. There are still some areas we need to trim back the budget even with the $462,000 the town of Plington has given us to meet the requirements of our schools to function. With that being said, let's move on to the approval of the minutes from February 26th to 2024. Did anybody see any corrections that needed to be made? Did entertain a motion to accept? Second? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Great. And talk about the PAC agreement. Dan? So, why don't you make the motion? I'll make a motion to accept the PAC agreement effort. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? For those of you in the audience, the Pilgrim Area Collaborative is a quasi-public school for special needs students. It's one of the best economically for us as a school district and it also keeps the kids that we send to that collaborative often close to home. It has schools in area towns and also it has a main campus down in Plymouth near the registry. So that's just one of our options for special needs students who we cannot supply the direct services here. That's one of the layers of the special ed onion. Okay, so we're accepting an agreement update with them. All those in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. On to the shared cost agreement, possible vote.
In the packet, you'll find a shared cost agreement that was recently reviewed by Unit 31 and tonight we are asking for your approval so that the chair of the Plington school committee will sign off on this agreement.
And Rob and I were at the meeting where the shared cost budget did finally come up for voting and it was passed unanimously by all three towns. So do I have a motion to accept the shared cost budget? Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous as well. On to the principal contract and discussion, possible vote.
In your packet, you'll find a draft contract for Principal Benito. We reviewed this contract in our last executive session and we're asking this evening for your approval.
So in the executive session, we accepted the contract and now it's time to just publicly reaffirm our vote. Anybody like to make a motion? Do I have a second? Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to take an item out of order. I would like to take the superintendent's report for the district update and the Plington budget discussion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
So tonight, in your packet, you'll have a presentation and this evening, you have a presentation behind us. So, the business director will be going through many of these slides and I will be taking the last three slides. Members of the team will also be here to provide additional details as we do. And I wanted to thank the team because it's just been a very difficult budget season. I especially wanted to thank Sarah and Chris. They came in to a fiscal year that required a great deal of restructuring and revamping and they have worked tirelessly to try to make make all of our jobs easier by getting up to speed quickly in terms of what had and had not been done in the past. And so they've done one of the jobs.
Thank you. I want to apologize to everybody because my computer in front of me is not computer controlling this, so I'm going to try to do this sitting down, but I might need to stand up and walk around. So, in this presentation, I wanted to start with the changes that have been made to the Plington budget since we last met on February 26th. So on February 26th, I presented to you the version two budget for Plington. Since that presentation, there have been two changes to the budget over the past month. So between the version two and version three budget, there was $24,217 subtracted. That is the re-grant allocation and that is used in Plington to offset a kindergarten teacher's salary. And then after March 14th vote of the shared cost budget, I updated the Plington budget with the shared cost budget information and that was a $1,103 increase to the Plington budget. So with those changes, we have in the school committee packet, the Plington proposed version four budget of $4,089,98.99 and that budget would require a reduction of $173,565.29 to meet the threshold set by the town for the total cost of education for FY '25. As you all know, this is an unusual year with some shifting of responsibility. And so I felt it was important to not just have an elementary school budget in Plington, but to look at the total overall cost, the elementary school budget plus the assessment to Silver Lake. And so the town of Plinton worked with those numbers and told me this is what Plinton can afford. I'm sorry, I just surprised myself because I clicked the clicker and the screen in front of me didn't change. So I'm laughing at myself also. So, with the vote, thank you, with the vote of the joint school committee on March 13th and the vote of Silver Lake Regional School Committee to use funds from excess and efficiency to help fund the Silver Lake budget, I had to update all of the assessments for the town. So Clinton's assessment for FY '24 was $2,515,724.22. The assessment for FY '25 for Plinton is $3,304,885.30. That is a 31.4% increase in the assessment to Plinton from Silver Lake. That assessment for FY '25, including the $4,089,000 from two slides ago, gives a total cost of education to Plinton as $7220,419, which is a 5.9% increase overall, the elementary school budget plus the assessment of the total cost of education for Plinton.
Can I just stop there for a second, Sarah?
Yes.
So 5.9% cost increase to educational loan, again, in a world where Proposition 2.5 is a real thing. Towns can only raise taxes by 2.5% every year. Our budget has gone up at the schools by far more than 2.5% for the past two years. We have beaten into all of the reserves the town has as of this budget, if we get it passed a town meeting, which is another call I'm going to make to all of you this evening. You came out here tonight to support your school. I need you at town meeting for that vote as well. Us asking for 5.9% increase in a budget of any department in the town is going to be something that's going to require a lot of people to say yay to it because there might be some people in the crowd that say nay to it as well. All right? So I again implore you to be at town meeting to support this budget. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. So some of the next slides come directly from the presentation that was given to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee and it was the global overall cost of education of all four budgets, the Silver Lake, Halifax, Kingston, Plinton budgets totally. And what I was trying to do was answer the question, why is there an increase in the total cost of education? And one of the things that we discovered as we were working on the FY '25 budget and it came as a surprise to all of us was that during this current fiscal year, during FY ' '24, we have unbudgeted special ed expenses. This is not, there's the usual changes in special ed that happened during the school year. This is an amount for the most part that should have been budgeted last year, but wasn't. And I don't have any answer for that. But currently this year, across all three towns, we're looking at approximately a $1 million additional special ed costs. And then next year, an additional $1.6 million in students' PAC that will be budgeted for in the FY '25 budget that were not part of the FY '24 budget. And these are the amounts broken down by the different talents and responsibilities. And then switching gears from, instead of looking at all four entities, the three towns in Silver Lake, if we look just at Plinton, if we compare how the budget worked in FY ' '24 versus how the budget was working in FY '25, and these numbers in these slides were as of March 14th. So in the FY '24 budget, if you look at the little graphic of the school, the things that happened within the walls of the school this year, the regular education budget, $2,832,133,83. And then the special education within the walls of the school, $685,536.59. In addition to those costs in Plinton for FY '24, there is other district vocational, which are students that would attend North Fork Agricultural High School or Bristol County Agricultural High School. They were one of the vocational schools that has a program that's not offered by Silver Lake. Those would be the costs that would fall under other district vocational. And then on the right-hand side of that slide are special ed expenses. There is $606,328.72 for other district special education costs in FY '24. And then Silver Lake staff in revolving programs. This is employees of Silver Lake that work in the pathways program at the high school or at the DLC. I don't know what they all stand for. Thank you, Developmental Learning Center at the middle school or potentially the DLC in Kingston. So this $96,778.80 is tuition, special ed tuition that is paid outside of Plinton School District to Kingston or Silver Lake or Halifax, which have a program these students are going to. For FY '25, that practice of charging separately for those programs had to be ended. So if you look at the Plinton budget for FY '25, it's going to be made up of four pieces. Again, inside the school building itself, regular education for which we've budgeted $3,132,766.33. And special education costing $688,678. And then out of district vocational, we've budgeted $93,900. And then in Plinton, the out of district special education costs are tuitions and transportation for grades K through six only. And that is $172,657.66. After surgery? After surgery. Thank you. So this is a slide that comes from my presentation to Silver Lake. Again, this addresses the overall cost of, the overall increase cost of education for FY '25. So there's contractual obligations. Now I want to be clear that when I talk about contractual obligations, I'm not just talking about teachers. There are contracts for elevator inspections and fire suppression system inspections and copy machines and contracts for everything have gone up. So contractual obligations is, yes, teaching and salaries for staff members, but it's contracts with vendors for everything. The cost of health insurance has gone up. That's not a specific cost in the Denny Elementary budget, but that is a cost in the Silver Lake budget that is passed on as part of the assessment. Special education, transportation, tuitions have increased dramatically as well as the cost of supplies. And I have budgeted 5% increase for utilities for next year.
Can we just stop there for a second, Sarah?
Yes.
I think you're doing a great job illustrating it, but the state of Massachusetts last year allowed all out of district special ed schools that are private Massachusetts to increase tuitions by nearly 15%. This year, they're allowed to increase their tuitions again another 5%. Again, you can see, I keep bringing it back to 2.5% is a town's capacity to meet obligations. All of the cost centers for schools are being outpaced dramatically by the increases we're seeing due to inflation in the real world, which is again why we're seeing the numbers that we're seeing come in for the needs for the school right now. If you're having difficulty wrapping your head around what Sarah just explained to you, I've been looking at this since January and it was just in the last couple of weeks where it all started clicking together for me as well and realizing how we got into this place. And it's really those dramatic increases in the contractual services that we deal with on a day-to-day basis and also the increase in special ed out of district placement and the sheer cost of some of those placements. We are responsible to take care of the educational well-being of all students in Plinton regardless of their needs. It's something that this committee has always held to both legally but also morally. And we can see the position that is being pushed in us with the state not really coming through with its side of funding to help support the town to meet the needs of these children. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. So, our next steps are discussions with the towns and the assessments that you saw at the beginning of this presentation were based on the joint meeting that was about a 5.9% increase. This was back on March 1st. The finance committee is scheduled for April 3rd at 5:30 PM where we will again go and meet with them to discuss the budget. We have prepared some proposed budget reductions to help us meet these goals. And as was previously stated, Silver Lake has reduced its budget and used excess and efficiency to total $1.6 million. So, we anticipated that we were going to need to reduce the budget by at least $173,000, but we also recognized looking at the services for students that we're going to need approximately $20,000 more to increase each and nine new services that have been, that are necessary for students. So we're looking more at $193,000, $194,000 that we were going to have to cut. So we met as a team and with Principal Benito and some of the cuts have less of an impact, but will still impact your ability or your resources in terms of teaching and learning for the students. The principal supply line will be reduced by $2,365. Supplies will be reduced by $6,700. Technology will be reduced by $15,000. This will affect docking stations, upgrades for next year. Curricular resources, we will have less access to programs for our Chromebooks. We're going to need to cut by $15,000. The substitute teaching line, which is going to be difficult, but we propose cutting by $14,000. The next item is based upon not having additional students request out of district vocational programming and being accepted into a program such as Bristol Aggie or North Fork Aggie, for example. But we anticipate that we may be able to reduce out of district vocational by $49,000 by eliminating one of those positions. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, the math interventionist position has not been filled for this year and so we would propose reducing that position to $31,000. That brings us to $133,265. And as was announced at the beginning of the meeting, the town will help us by providing $60,736 to help meet that gap.
Any questions for the superintendent about the proposed cuts? We have five, we have five business days between now and the deadline for that?
April 1st is the deadline.
Thank you, Sarah.
We're going to know sooner rather than later on that. But what we know is we have one student from Plinton who attends Bristol County Agricultural High School. We have not gotten applications from other students in Plinton to either Bristol Aggie or Fork Aggie, but there is one email that has come through to Peter Glass, I'm sorry, Elliot Glass of High School about a family moving to Silver Lake that has a student enrolled at social vocational, which will be continuing their junior year. And while I get emails like that, I just want to know what town do, where are you moving to? Because it matters. So I haven't heard back on that yet, but I'm definitely going to hear back Thursday.
Contractual resources or grants or contracts?
So this obviously wouldn't be the ones that we had contractual obligations for. These are the renewals or things that should be subscriptions that we aren't required to. These are the renewals or things that should be subscriptions that we aren't required to.
Document stations are ready for, I don't compare it, or do we have the technology?
So my understanding is that state is moving towards fewer desktops and moving towards document stations so that people can maneuver and use them less expensive. So it should have little, minimal impact on the classroom functionality next year. But it is the way that he would like to eventually replace desktops with the document station laptops.
So it's not moving in a reasonable way?
It's going to take some time.
Is there a list of the programs that are going to be limited in the, what the Chromebooks?
Yes. It's a lengthy list.
Yeah, the audience could follow along a little better than I can. But if you could just write off a list and show the crowd what's going to be limited. All of this would be for the next fiscal year. Yep. The freeze that we put in place at our last meeting? Yeah, just froze any new purchases for the rest of the school. The sub-line, I, I would argue, isn't going to be that impactful. If you look at our budget actual draw from the sub-line for this year, we're far below what we budgeted for last year. And part of that's because we have a building-based sub now. Someone who works here every day who can fill in. And because it's awfully difficult to get someone to come in and sub from the sub-list on a daily basis as well.
Would you like the list? Brain Pop, Pedal Go, Learning Ally, Project Meet the Way, Reading ABC, Schoology, Type and Club. And any funding to support enrollment changes. In addition, the removal of funds for classroom libraries and some supplemental reading supports could be affected.
And we don't typically take private donations to help with the operating budget of the school district. However, it, it's not uncommon for PTAs or PTOs to sometimes buy subscriptions to services like those just listed by the superintendent. That could be a way of trying to make whole some of the losing for the kids. How was the best content?
So it was based upon not only utilization, but if they were there. So some of the things like the dyslexia screening assessments, those are, some supports are more critical and required than other supports. So there was, there was that aspect. Some of it was based on if we had already entered into a contract, obviously we wouldn't be getting out of a contract. Some of it was based upon user, how widely it's used and whether or not there are, in some cases, if there is some sort of free programming that might be able to supplement in areas while this is the preferred subscription. So that's, that's how those decisions were made?
Any other questions or comments from the committee? So just like everyone else in the room, we would love not to make any of these cuts this evening. This is the last thing we want to do. We all joined the school committee to help make Denne a better, stronger school, not to take resources away from our students or our teachers. Though it is a little bit easier to bear this evening knowing that no one is going to have to wake up tomorrow knowing that they won't be employed here in September. I would like to thank the Board of Selectment, specifically Christine Joy, the Finance Committee, specifically Marilyn Brown, and our Town Manager, Liz Dennehy, for working in concert with the School Department to get us the four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars in increases that we are able to work with this evening. And with that said, I will make a motion for the Plinton School Committee to set the Denne Elementary budget for the FY twenty-five school year at three million nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Any further conversation or discussion? Seeing none? Do you want, do you want a minute?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I have questions.
We don't have to vote yet then.
So what's your point? Our last budget was four point three. And the proposed budget was three point, or four point zero eight nine?
Yep.
So what's the deficit?
Where are we pulling money out?
Hardly. And then we're going from four point three to four point zero eight nine?
So we pulled out over a million dollars in special ed costs and put that into Silver Lake's, right? But then we came back to the table, our first version of the budget. We saw a five percent increase at the Denne. And we said, this doesn't make sense. We just lost a million dollars of our costs. Where'd all this new cost come from? And then after we did some accounting and we accounted for some errors in the lines, we realized it was still about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase to the Denne side, even after we took out the over a million dollars in special ed three K costs. So unfortunately, this year, the only way to look at the budgets is to look at both budgets at the same time. Because there were so many buckets that moved from one to the other. So yes, we are still seeing a negative number for the Denne. But at one point in version two of our budget, our regular day increase was three hundred seven thousand dollars. So again, we've lost all that special ed expense. We did realize a huge increase in the regular day here and we're trying to mitigate that to some effect with some of these cuts that we're talking about here tonight.
You know, all the budget, some of these lines are looking at, I think that's going to share somewhere. So we have been following a budget for, is this something that can be reviewed?
So he's making comments and I've seen this as well. Any actuals? There's still some zeros in some lines. Could you just explain where some of the zeros in some of the lines in our budget come from? Are we actually going to fulfill those at some point? Or are those going to be offsets? That we can use to backfill our budget deficit in special ed of over two hundred fifty thousand dollars this year?
So each instance has its own separate story. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the biggest number that you would look at, which is vocational tuition where there's, there's, I'm sorry. There's money budgeted for twenty-two thousand six hundred and seven, I'm sorry. Thirty-five thousand sixty-one dollars budgeted for out-of-district vocational and none has been spent. So the interesting story behind that is Bristol County Agricultural High School about six years ago decided that they were going to build, not for the students that are actually attending, but for the number of students you had the previous year. And Silver Lake has, will not, will not follow that. And so what is happening is they haven't billed us because they're not going to bill us for the freshmen until next year. And if we had twelve students attend next year, they would want to only bill us for one who attended this year. But that's not in accordance with Mass General laws that say you pay for goods and services in the year you receive them. And so this came up in the conversation at our last school committee meeting. And when I dug into it, I realized this is what was going on. And so I will actually be making a payment to Bristol Agricultural High School for the student that does attend, even though they haven't billed us and they won't give us. Are there other, so that's, that's the big money?
Yeah, that's the thirty-five thousand we go off of. Shared cost for special education supervision is twenty thousand, what's your percentage of cost? There's a whole bunch of like seventy percent, maybe a hundred percent, a hundred percent. And we don't have to go beyond a lot of that. There's, there are quite a few of them. Shared cost has a lot budgeted within it, but a hundred and seventy-two, ninety percent, maybe it's a hundred percent. Are those all going to get budgeted? Are those going to be expensive?
So, and again, some of that is my fault and I'll take complete responsibility for it. I need to bill the towns for the shared cost budget. There's more things to do every day than there are hours to do them and I, I have. So there are monies set aside for the shared cost budget. The shared cost budget is a real thing and.
So we can assume all these ones that are still, that don't have any incumbents, that still have money budgeted will, will be.
Not every single solitary one of them, but most of them. One of the things that we are working on right now in the business office is the salary projections we're going to give. As Mr. Fraser explained, there is a deficit in, in special education this year. We did go budget freeze at the last school committee meeting. And one of the things that happens after that is in my office, we have to do a projection of how much money do we need for the remainder of the year, which involves the payroll department doing projections for every penny they're going to spend between now and June thirtieth. And then the accounts payable needs to do projections. And you should have all of those numbers back to me by tomorrow so that I can put them together and then pull money from any line that has money in it.
So will we be able to talk about that if I'm physically here?
Yes.
Yeah. Typically in July, we do our closeout. But even prior to the end of July, even usually before town meeting, we know if we're going to have any surpluses. And in this year, we're hoping that we can have some lines since we froze that we don't use all of the money that we projected that can help backfill. So we don't have to go back to the town for extra money for this fiscal year. Because that is a possibility at special town meeting. We might need to ask the town for money just to finish this fiscal year. It might be a situation, since it's a special ed-related deficit, that we might want to look at our special ed reserve fund that we do have fully funded with the town. Any other questions before we take the vote? Okay, so the motion has been made. It has been seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? And it's past unanimous. We have a budget. Thank you for coming tonight. If this is the point at which you'd like to go home and be with your families, we would totally understand. If you want to stay for the business part of the meeting, feel free to, to stay. I'm going to call a brief three-minute recess for us to sit back and relax and let any of you out of the room who want to go. Thank you for being here tonight. We deeply appreciate it. I'd like to call the meeting back to order and back into the regular agenda. Moving on to new business. So town meeting items. Town meeting is coming up. Town meeting will be here on May fifteenth. Appreciate all of your attendance at town meeting. Our budget, the Silver Lake Regional School budget. Couple Silver Lake articles will be up for discussion and vote at the town meeting. In addition to that, Sarah, Jill and I will be meeting to discuss where we are financially for this fiscal year and see whether or not we need to approach the town for any additional funds to finish up fiscal year twenty-four. Clothing and textile thing. So Dan had brought this up at the last meeting. And his question was, who is in charge of the clothing bin at the end of the driveway for the Denne Elementary School? And I have found out who is in charge of the clothing bin. It is in fact Casa. And Sarah Prario is here this evening with us. And I just asked Sarah to do a little bit more research on what does that bin do for us as a school? And where are those clothing articles disseminated? Your concern was, you've done some research in it.
My concern is that people are putting clothes in there thinking that they're going into a poor situation. And I believe the majority of those are being shredded and using rags. So we're not getting financial benefit from it. Misleading the public, people like, see people put black or something. And if it's not getting reused, if it's getting shredded and used in rags, they're getting hundreds of dollars a year out of it. That really engages me.
Yeah, I would speak to that. It's about fifty percent of it is reused and shipped as actual low-end items to be used in other countries for, where it is actually used for clothing, footwear, accessories, and it's shipped out. About fifty percent of it is shredded and used in rags that can't be used actually evidence. And those are kept here in the United States. So we do, it's a very small fundraiser. We get like six cents a pound. And in twenty-twenty-two, we're at like five hundred dollars. And twenty-twenty-three was around seven hundred and fifty dollars. And it's a small amount, but it does, the stuff that is good and can be used again, it does get reused. It's about half a house. So fifty percent of it is shipped out to developing countries. It helps economics, jobs. Most of the labor goes to South America. The founder of the company has actually traveled there to see kind of where it goes. There's a cardex on the t-shirts for Africa that a lot of the people go to. And yes, about half fifty percent of it does get shredded. It can't be reused. So that's kind of where it's at. There's like a hundred and eighty different like schools, universities and organizations in Massachusetts that in, and we have been doing it for, I don't know, years. It's had a little bit of a time, but it does, you know, have tactics and stuff that can't get shredded. And used and sold as rags for businesses in the United States.
That was my concern.
Yes. I totally agree with that. And I just don't, I didn't know that either until I looked a little deeper. And I just don't only put like junk in it, like, you know. But stuff that goes, it does take, which is awesome for ants. And then I looked a little bit deeper and yeah. So what happened, it does actually give you some even to install to people that need it.
Sarah, do you have any Casa updates, anything coming up soon? Anything you've just done recently that you'd like to share with the committee?
We have a talent show of our amazing, oh, and here's one right here. We had three moms that ran the talent show, very successful. They've been doing it for years. And so that was just this past Friday. And we now hosted at the middle school. So that is much more agreeable to our audiences growing in the state. So we have the talent show. We have a sixth grade honor service coming up for turn two honors. And in May, we host a staff luncheon, usually around teacher appreciation. And in June, we'll be bringing back the art view for middle day. And we're ready for a art program through the art class, which more information will be coming out with students. Since the middle of January, we have been working on artwork that will be available to people like the mom, you know, like a shirt or a little cape or mug or something. So we've got a few things in the works. And we'd really like to talk to the school committee of the school about the proposed cuts and figure out where we can step in and help people to be sponsored through the, and visit where we can step in.
Thank you, Sarah. Definitely appreciate that conversation. Thank you, Sarah. Definitely appreciate that conversation. Great unfinished business. Denne field used by dogs, so I did meet with the town manager and they are still looking into a dog park and have no intent to institute any type of leash lock. And would like us to stand firm currently on not allowing dogs off the way to the park. So that is where that conversation will begin. Onto the playground, do we have an update about the testing, Sarah?
Yes, the inspection is scheduled to start tomorrow. Everything beyond that is weather dependent. So remember, there's a threshold for temperature for the testing surfaces, but they are coming out tomorrow beginning.
We'll leave that unfinished business, but I think we're going to take Denne fields and used by dogs off for now, until we get an update from the town. So reports of standing committees, admin review. Believe it or not, we are getting close to the end of the first year of a two-year cycle for superintendent. So the formula of evaluation will be coming up pretty soon for the superintendent of schools. There is a subcommittee of members from all four different school committees from across Silver Lake and Union Thirty-One who will be giving the, the policy subcommittee, we have had no meeting, negotiations. We do have some executive session for, okay. Union Thirty-One, Rob and I were at a Union Thirty-One meeting where we went through a much more extensive explanation of the budgetary situation this year. And the changes to how, how district placements are charged now. It was once that the Plington School Committee, the five of us were in charge of every single added district student from age two-point-nine to twenty-two. We had been told by DESI that that was an improper way of doing it. So now we are in charge of district placements for K-6, whereas Silver Lake is in charge of district placements for all other age categories. So that's why there's been such a shift in some of the buckets of funds from over the past two years. Pat?
Last meeting was a presentation back, we went to our next meeting, so you go forward.
Capital's approving. Again, Peter, I don't know if you've had a chance to, to meet the town properties, but again, they're, they're trying to approach the last, some of the arbitrage funds for any of your arrogant lizards up on the roof. So if you get a mint, I know that's a lot to ask, but if you get a mint, you might want to touch base with them if you have a legislative agent. So we actually made out quite well in Plington with chapter seventy funding this year. Chapter seventy funding is the state aid that towns receive. We received one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars more than we received last year. One of the ways that we're funding the increases we're seeing in education here in our town. Unfortunately, the chapter seventy funding formula did not work out so well for all of the towns and municipalities of Massachusetts this year. For some reason, the state allowed private added district special ed schools to increase their prices by fifteen and five percent the past few years, but only used a one-point-three-five percent inflation index for chapter seventy funding. There's a large disconnect between why the state is allowing prices of private schools to go up so much while not also supporting our public schools in our towns at the local level with chapter seventy funding. Plington was also very sad to hear that the rural schools bill had been modified quite substantially up on Beacon Hill, stripping out all funding. Currently here in Plington, we receive about seventy-two thousand dollars a year in rural aid. There was a potential that we were going to see that quadruple just this year, which again would help alleviate some of the exact problems we saw this evening at the state. In addition to that, the rural aid bill had language in it demanding the legislature form a special committee to investigate special ed funding in the state of Massachusetts. That was stripped out of the bill as well. So currently, I and colleagues are asking the state of Massachusetts to increase the inflationary index from one-point-three-five to closer to four-point-oh. We're also asking the state of Massachusetts to not only fully fund circuit breaker at seventy-five percent of extraordinary expense, but also fund special ed transportation at seventy-five percent of extraordinary expense. Last year, they funded it at fifty-seven percent. From the region, we saw a decrease in regional transportation reimbursement, which again, Plington has to pay a sum of, which takes away from our ability to deal with the day-to-day demands of our students. Regional transportation statutorily is supposed to be funded a hundred percent by the state for regional school systems. We're getting about eighty percent compensation this year. Last year was closer to ninety. So we've seen a regression in the states leaning into that obligation to regional schools. And last but not least, the per-people minimum increment is thirty dollars this year in the chapter seventy formula. They're giving us thirty bucks a kid. Don't spend it all in one place. The Master Municipal Association, the Superintendent Association, the School Committee Association is asking that the minimum increment be one hundred dollars and that should be the baseline only to go up from there. So unfortunately, the state has no money. There's a lot of people kind of concerned that Governor Healy's budget was actually more aggressive than it should have been. And unfortunately, what we're seeing for the one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars here for the denne dues, I don't anticipate it getting any larger in our praying that it doesn't get lower before the budget is finally signed up at the state house, probably sometime around July fifteenth of this year. So that's the legislative update. Single signature warrants, Sarah?
Thank you. There's currently a stack of five warrants, total of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents of circulated signatures. How do we deal with those to the town?
Do you have any questions about any of the warrants this evening?
I have one. This first one here is the R-handover, our handover way program. It's in thousand, it's our one of MASH invoices.
I'm going to have to look at them, sorry.
Of course.
So this, this is the Cardinal Pushing Schools. And Cardinal Pushing Schools runs a day program and a residential program. And this is one month tuition for a day school student.
So we are still in charge of two-point-nine to twenty-two this fiscal year?
I can't hear you.
Last question I have is a resource one. This seems to be one of our resource bills.
Yes, this is the mysterious collection of bills that came in in January, February, and one came in just a few days ago. And I had spoken about in a previous meeting that I wasn't sure what it was and wasn't going to pay it until I knew what it was. I'm sorry to tell you, these are legitimate bills and we are responsible for them.
This is an aggregate of most of the bills?
This is essentially July to watch, yes.
Is it closer than nine months worth of bills? We go to June thirtieth, right?
So
Because this, this would be great to try and get an understanding of how much we're actually using this year.
Exactly.
Are you looking at the spreadsheets that I put in the drive?
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
So I put those spreadsheets in the drive. That's the, the invoices, that was the billing to EverSource for FY twenty-three. And then there's two different spreadsheets for FY twenty-four. It was billing to EverSource and billing to Select. And we're, we were kind of excited to get, what is it, sixteen and seventeen dollar bills from, from EverSource. And then this bill came in. And the reason why they didn't bill us beginning in July from that account was it was, they had to transition us over from a regular business account to a solar account. I don't know what the difference was there, but it took them some time.
So it is from July twenty-three, it looks like it was just four and six, so this is nine months.
So there's that, and the seven thousand, like just a bunch of that's in here.
And what's the total for EverSource for the nine months?
So this is, so this total looks like twenty-eight thousand, nine, seven. That's our three eighteen. But I don't see wait for this, which, the value of EverSource.
And Katie, how much did we pay to Select?
Uh, seventy-one hundred. That is from July twenty-three to the end of February.
So a total of thirty-six thousand over the nine months?
So of that, how much did we produce and sell back?
Well, I think, I think that's what we're trying to figure out. We, we took all the time at the town to put solar panels on the building with the hopes that we would see at least the stabilization of our electric line or maybe even a small re-group. And I think we're all desperate right now to find fifteen-hundred to fifteen thousand dollars worth of savings in electric that we could apply to one of those programs or to, or, or maybe back to some other lines in the budget. That's why we're so focused on this is because we're just desperate to find dollars where we can to try and backfill the things that we took out of the budget tonight. So could I propose for our next meeting that we try and get a detail from July first to our next meeting date, specific to the electric? And Sarah, there's like anybody from any of the companies still not playing nice with us? If I have to call in our state rep, I would call in our state rep if necessary? Or is everything smooth out at this point?
They were fine.
They were good?
I was on hold for twenty minutes, but other than that, they were fine and courteous and
Okay, so we think we've solved the mystery of the bill popping up?
Yes.
Okay.
My first question was, is this legitimate? It was an awful lot of money all at once.
Right.
And it is legitimate.
Okay.
Can we find out how much electricity we produced and sold back as well?
I can reach out through the town, back to Select and see what they're seeing from there.
Because we've been renting and then we've got nearly thirty thousand dollars on top of that to make it pay it solar, so I'll get, in the colder months, I'll get EverSource bills, but then I get my Vivid bills.
Well, I think we're meeting with the finance committee. You guys are welcome to come on April third. That'll be one of the questions we ask when we're the finance committee. We can, we could try and liaise with their solar people and see what maybe Select can come to one of our meetings and explain it to us in, in greater detail. Rob?
I'm sorry, going back to EverSource.
Yeah.
The, this is from six to twenty-three, which will be in our, we'll be in twenty-four.
So the fiscal year starts July?
So I guess a month of this is in the twenty-four fiscal.
I'm sorry. A month is in FY twenty-three, is what you're saying?
Right.
It's when the bill comes to us.
It's not the billing period.
It's not the service dates, it's the billing period.
When we receive it.
Yeah, well, not when we receive it, it's when, you'll notice that, well, I didn't include the envelopes on, we did get five of those bills all at once in January. So it's not, it's, it's when the, the bill date is, not the service dates.
I understand. So there you go, go office.
Any other questions on warrants? So at our next meeting, we'll try and get all of our expenses for electric to open up. And at the finance committee meeting in Plington on April third, we'll ask to liaise with someone from the town and Select to try and get their expertise to help us understand that as well for our next school committee. Does that sound like a good plan? Question? So we're on to Casa and Sarah already gave us her report. Thank you, Sarah, appreciate it. Appreciate you being here this evening. Principal's report, Mr. Venido.
Thank you very much. Currently, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-three students enrolled at Denne. As Sarah mentioned, we had a very successful talent show Friday night at the middle school thanks to Casa and all the parent volunteers for making that happen. After thirteen years of service to the Denne, one of our paraprofessionals, Tracy Sweeney, has accepted a position at North River Collaborative as an adjustment counselor. In her time here, she went back and got a degree and is pursuing some new avenues. So happy for her, very sad for us.
Good for her.
Turn two report cards went home and we have a good number of families here for parent conferences. We ran the book fair during that same time, another big success. I did respond to D E P about the water incident we had here on February twenty-ninth. There are some necessary upgrades that we're going to need to put into the water filtration system. We've had two companies out to take a look and get us some quotes. MCAS season is upon us. We had a visit today from Aggie the Comfort Dog to visit grade five before they started their test tomorrow. Grade six has ELA on April second and third, grade four on April fourth and fifth, and grade three on April ninth and tenth. As was previously mentioned, our playground inspection will take place this week, just in time for MCAS. And I would ask the committee to consider approval of three flyers. We have a basketball camp, a Girl Scout flyer and a flyer for social or flag football.
Basketball on our campus, there are police.
I, I would note that the Silver Lake basketball is not affiliated with Silver Lake Regional Schools and it is a for-profit camp. So it should have required the approval of the school committee to go up.
The flags will hold means tomorrow.
No, so I don't know. It's a organization tomorrow.
All right, so what are the two nonprofit ones that we have not sent one yet?
Free Skills and Drills through Patriots and social flag football.
And we've, we've vetted that to nonprofit?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the other one?
The other one is Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts? Okay.
This is Free Skills and Drills.
But they're
Yes.
Beat switch? How do you feel about it? Because we, we've taken the stance before that we don't send on flyers for for-profit organizations. So you want to just pass over it? So you want to just pass over it?
At least the full one.
Okay. I'm going to pass over that one. Any reservations with the Girl Scouts flyer?
The Girl Scouts one is fine. This should be changed if they want it.
Can I have your motion to allow the Girls' Flyer to go home?
Motion.
Five seconds. Any further discussion? Call doesn't fail. All right, Girl Scouts may go home and backpack now.
Thank you.
Anything else from us tonight, Peter?
Let's go to do it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Peter before we move on? So on to Sarah's financial report.
Thank you. I actually had three things on my report, and the first one was Bristol Agricultural High School. I don't know if you want me to say anything in addition to what we've already said on that?
No, that was an interesting way that they do billing. Thanks for enlightening us.
The second thing I was going to talk about was Eversource, which we've also talked about. So we can check that off. The last thing, if you look through the financial update that was in your packet, you can see that we continue to have deficits in special education, transportation, tuition, and contracted services. Superintendent Prue and I will be meeting the school committee chair on Wednesday to review options for closing out FY24. My office is currently working on their projections for salaries and accounts payable through June 30th to get an amount of money that we feel we need to make it through June 30th.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? All right. So any curriculum instructional updates?
So unfortunately, Assistant Superintendent Lynch could not be here tonight, but he has submitted the Student Opportunity Act Plan for Review. Every three years, each district is required to submit an updated Student Opportunity Act Plan to the Department of Education. Plans are due on April 1st and must be approved by the Plimpton School Committee. So we are looking for your vote of approval this evening if possible. Attached is a draft of the SOA Plan for Denit. It was uploaded to the school committee folder on Friday after it was reviewed by Principal Venido and Assistant Director of Support Services, Christine Markalini. It's a mouthful, I'm sorry. Each district is required to identify one to three evidence-based programs they are implementing to close achievement gaps. For Denit, our PBS initiative and the multi-tiered system of support and our support teamwork qualifies as expenditures allowable under the Student Opportunity Act.
Any questions about the application? Do you want to entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one?
I'd like a motion.
Do we have a second?
It looks like this...
You can second, then we'll entertain conversation. All right, we have a second, go ahead.
It looks like there's some financial operations on this.
So if you're talking about the stipends for PBIS, those are currently being paid with ESAR, and we will be able to pay those positions as well, again, with ESAR funds and FY24.
Believe it or not, this is the short form. Need to clean up some editorial things? Okay. Understood.
So I'm sorry, we need to approve this today?
It has to be approved by April 1st.
Is it possible in a direction that we can gain the assumed justice?
What corrections are we looking for besides just to clean up the ground? Yeah, I don't think that we need to reconvene through that, I think. The notation is enough. If there's major substantive issues with how the money is being allocated or used for, concerns about the carrot and the stick aspect of the Student Opportunity Act short form, we can have to entertain that conversation right now. Believe it or not, this is actually the short form because we don't receive that much in Student Opportunity Act funding. The long form is about nine to 10 times longer if we work off the given minutes.
So it looks like it's in total, it's about $100,000. Is that about like $44,000 to $54,000?
Well, so ESAR funding is federal funding that we have one more year on, and then that goes away. It sunsets. It's not going to be replenished ever again. Yeah, because that was COVID money. So we're nearing the end of that.
But this looks like it's only the next three years.
I think what Ryan is suggesting is that we use Student Opportunity Act funds to assume some of the areas that we were using ESAR funds that are no longer going to be available for us.
So when the center being charged approaches a comparable dollar or five, I don't know.
So for FY25, we will use ESAR funding. FY26, if you were to approve this plan in FY26, we would need to find a different funding source. Right, yep. And each year, we would present this to you with... So this has to be...
I'm just thinking, not next year, but later. We just clarify, page 14 is talking about, I can't tell if it's $5,000 in additional funding that's going to be cut off by the FTO. I just want to make sure there's no figuring from the five.
$5,000 in addition will be needed for PD turnouts.
Okay, so it's five, all right. Just because it is charted on page 12, it says $54,000. It's a separate funding allocated for the next three years. Then when you put that up to page 14, is it talking about two separate things? Is that what you're going to do with four parts of the budget? So they're two separate, so then it's...
That's my understanding. Is that your understanding, Principal Venido?
And that's all ESAR.
What's that?
That's all ESAR.
So ESAR funding is the 54.4.
That's the 44.
Did she say pre-October funding?
So it's 44. You'll see some of it is the dashboard platform, which is in our... One of our technology lines? It's in our budget already.
Yeah.
What is the measure of success for this? How are we going to, what are the metrics we're using to evaluate the success of student opportunity? Is there, is it in here?
To measure the effectiveness of support, we will track the number of students who are served by the support team and the effectiveness of interventions. So we have a number of different measures that we have on EduClima. For the first time, we have a single platform with multiple measures that we can generate data on any sort of testing that has been done for students, whether it be MCAS, DIBELS, STAR, those types of things. So what we would expect to see, what we're monitoring on these is to what extent are the interventions providing positive results, gains, growth for the students?
Are these non-cognitive interventions or are they just full channels? Are they non-cognitive interventions or are they...
So the data platform is going to just help us put everything in one spot so we're able to get the DIBELS data, STAR data, MCAS data, attendance, all of it. So it's kind of like a more comprehensive streamlined way for our support team to be able to look at students and also tracking what students are getting, what interventions. Are they seeing through a little reading teacher? Are they going into a reading group? Are they seeing Title I? And then for us to be able to track their success over time. It's just going to help us do it in a more organized, comprehensive way rather than like looking at it from anywhere. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Is this going to give us need indicators or like metrics of quality of students? Or is it just, is it just data?
It's really just a more organized way to look at the data and the system. So like, for instance, when we do STAR assessments, we open the STAR data. So we do that, you know, three times a year. So we'll be able to look very clearly at, you know, how a student is progressing, how a group of students is progressing in a year. So it does sort of do those things for us. Right now, what we are sort of functioning with is like, we're kind of like looking over here, digging back into data, looking at attendance, and trying to find the old and the past scores. And it would just allow us to, you know, see a group of students that we're providing interventions for in a organized way and see how they're kind of, when you're giving them progress and feel with the interventions that we have. So it would say, are they being measured more with progress for our end?
Do we have a streaming information system?
Yes.
What would we use?
Power School.
Power School?
Yeah. Power School is really just sort of like attendance data, you know, things like that.
My comment is wrong, Tom.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't like do like this.
So are there any more questions about Student Opportunity Act Plan? We have a motion and we have a second. Does anybody need some more time before a vote?
I just have one question separately. I think it's a great, it's a good platform to make it easier and more streamlined to track everything. But having been tracking ESAR funds before, is the opportunity to use ESAR funding aside from something like this platform, it's still an option? I'm just thinking, you have $54,000. Are you still able to utilize it for state learning space, building upgrades, et cetera, et cetera, to create an environment for the students? Is at one point, ten minutes, like half, ten minutes, maybe, or after umbrella, would you use ESAR funds? Is that still an option?
So I guess I'm not sure what you're saying.
If you decided to allot $54,000 for something else in ESAR funding that wasn't this platform, could you use it for, just could you use it as a, as a, building upgrades? An example of ESAR boards? Things that would create the environment that we need?
It would depend on the specifics of the...
Yeah, the last...
ESAR now.
The last round of ESAR had the broad-based bucket, but then there was two other buckets that were more specific.
Right, so I didn't know far and...
And I don't know which bucket this remaining $54,000 is from. Right.
Yeah. Just in the light of having three, since, you know, there's a ton of things. I'm not saying this is not something to do, but in light of the bigger picture, if there's...
We would have to look into that. I can't say for certain.
And it looks like it's the way the plan is written. We're using the ESAR funds to capture more of the Student Opportunity Act funds. And if we didn't use the ESAR funds for that, I don't know how we would qualify for the Student Opportunity Act funds on top. So we don't must lose the... Yeah, we'd lose that opportunity. Any other questions, comments before a vote? Okay. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? Those against? Any abstentions? You may abstain. Four yes, Nikki abstained. All right. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, my update was to be for the discussion votes.
All right. Well, again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening and sitting through. A very emotional meeting for all of us. I'm glad we arrived where we did. And again, the next steps for us are meeting with the finance committee, and then it's on to town meeting on May 15th. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm now going to adjourn into executive session, not to return to regular. So I want to remind us that school is closed this Friday for Good Friday observances. There's a joint meeting of Union 31 and the Silver Lake Regional School Committee on April 11th at 5:00 PM. And then right after that, we have April vacation, the week of April 15th through 19th. And on Memorial Day, there will be no school on May 27th. Again, I'd like to add town meeting, May 15th, to that list of important dates. And now make a motion to adjourn into executive session, subject to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contractual negotiations with the paraprofessionals and custodians. And pursuant to executive session, MGL 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law for the approval of our executive session minutes from February 26, 2024, not to return to open session. Do I have a second? Okay, I'm a yes, Dan? Kate? Nikki? Rod? Thank you all for being here this evening.